Call a meeting to order. Madam Clerk? You call a roll?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Councilmember Minigar?
Present.
Councilmember Susuets?
Here.
Councilmember Davies?
Here.
I'm sorry Mayor, Pro Tem Davies?
Here.
Councilmember Janaway?
Present.
And Mayor McCloskey.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you very much. We will commence with the invocation to be given by Pastor Tom Gastil from the Aliso Creek Presbyterian Church. Pastor, please. Please rise.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, I thank you for this opportunity to lead us in prayer and to begin your service by coming to Almighty God with our requests and our praises. So let's pray. Dear God, you are the source of all that is. You are the one who gives us meaning and purpose, beauty, and truth because you are those things. God, I thank you and on behalf of these people this week as we head into Thanksgiving week, we give you thanks for all of your good blessings that you have showered upon us, gifts that we so easily take for granted. God, we thank you for our bodies, our health, our homes, the food on our tables, the roofs over our heads, and our relationships, our families and our friendships. And God, we are especially grateful as we consider that sometimes these things are compromised or our health is not with us or we have lost a loved one. Help us to be grateful for all that you have given and even for those times when you take our gifts away. God, I thank you for this country where civic leaders are put in place, not through violence but through the voting process. And I pray, God, on our behalf, that you would help us as Americans not to take our freedoms, especially our freedom of speech, freedom of assembly, our freedoms in the religious realms. We pray that we would not take these for granted. And God, we thank you for the city of Laguna Nigal, this beautiful place where we get to live and raise families and work. And Lord, I pray for these civil servants of this city, that you would help them, that you would give them prudence, that you would give them a sense of cooperation as they work together to deal with various problems and opportunities before them. Thank you that you have given us stewards and I pray that you would help them to know what is best, not only for their immediate neighbors but for our surrounding communities. And God, tonight, we pray together for the civil servants who literally put their lives on the line, our fire department and police force workers. God, we ask that you would keep them safe, that you would encourage and uphold them. We are so grateful for law and order for without those things, God, we descend into chaos that we are seeing raging and burning around the world. And these kinds of meetings that are rational and calm where we can talk through our differences, these kind of meetings can't occur. So we pray for law enforcement. And Lord, we pray for those who are serving overseas. We pray for the men and women of our armed forces, that you would give them strength, that you would keep them safe, that you would be with their family members. And we pray for not only our city council members but for, in particular, God, our leaders over our country, that you would give our president and his cabinet and our senators wisdom. For God, we are facing dangerous and violent times and we're not always sure what we should do. So we ask that you would guide our leaders, that they would have wisdom and resolve and a sense of proportion but also strength. And God, finally, I pray that you would come alongside those in this city who are hurting, those whose bodies are aching, who are struggling to be grateful this Thanksgiving week because they are lonely or sick or in the hospital, perhaps are facing financial struggles or the end of an important relationship. God, we pray that you would be with folks who are facing horrific tragedies but also the quieter sorrows that they don't even necessarily want to share with others, perhaps even some here tonight who are hurting and aching. We pray, God, that you would comfort them, that you would come alongside them, that you would remind them, as the psalmist said, that there is nowhere where we can escape from your presence, whether we go high or low, for you knit us in our mother's wombs and nothing can separate us from your gaze. But Lord, we thank you that you not only see us but that you have come to be among us, that you comfort us. And God, I pray, as an ambassador of Jesus Christ, I pray tonight that you would remind humanity that greatness was given in the gift of Jesus, that as the world looks so often to powerful leadership, he came to wash feet, to serve, to suffer, and to die. I thank you that immensity was cloistered in the womb. Mary. And so, God, I pray that through Jesus, the one who has come to comfort and to help and to heal and to save, that you would help people to know his yoke and that you would remove their burdens and that you would walk with them through the struggles, the trials, and the joys of life. And I close this time, this prayer, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. So now have Boy Scout Troop 772 come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Boy Scout Troop 772, color guard, please advance. Please place your right hand over your heart. Those in uniform, please salute. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Audience, you may be seated.
Well, this is always one of the best parts of a city council meeting, meeting the young men and young women and Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and others who present us with our colors. We have a special added attraction here. Five of these gentlemen are going to become Eagle Scouts and will receive a resolution and certificate from the city. But first, I'd like you to tell us your name and what school you go to.
Hi, I'm Thomas Coppinger and I go to Aliso Nigal High School.
Hi, I'm Dylan Page and I go to Jay Sarah Catholic High School.
Hi, I'm Alex Troy and I go to ANHS, Aliso Nigal High School.
Hi, I'm Blake Baumstieg and I go to Aliso Nigal High School.
Okay, now I'd like to ask all of those Eagle Scouts to come back down. There's five of you, aren't there? Only four? Oh, I thought there were five. Well, becoming an Eagle Scout is the premier achievement in the Boy Scouts hierarchy. It's a very difficult thing to do. There are many badges that everybody has to get. I can't remember the number. What's the number of badges you have to get?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Looks like you've done better than that. What happened to you? He's got him. I know he's got him. I just didn't know what happened. Well, we're very proud of you. This is one of the joys of our being in office, to be able to come and recognize you, you young gentlemen. You are the elite of the elite, of the youth of America. And I know historically you guys go on to become leaders because you start out young and you have it inculcated into you that you're into leadership. I want to present each one of you with a resolution. And I don't know who is who, but this is Blake Baumstieg. Blake, I want to just read... Oh, whereas to attain the rank of Eagle Scout, you have to get 21 merit badges. Okay. And you have to do community service and you have to do all this before your 18th birthday. You completed your Eagle project at Mission Lutheran Church where you focused on emergency preparedness by constructing an emergency supply shed and numbered the campus doors to assist in navigating during an emergency. So it's my pleasure to present Blake with that certificate. Okay, Dylan Page. Dylan, you completed your Eagle Scout project by volunteering to accommodate special needs children and young adults in the tandem surfing activity offered by the Best Day Foundation that provides memories that last a lifetime. Alex Troy. Alex, you completed your Eagle Scout project by planning, designing, and building a custom 40 cubic foot portable storage unit for the American Legion Post 281. Have your dad Photoshop in all this stuff. Okay, Thomas Egan Coppinger. Thomas Egan Coppinger completed his Eagle Scout project by repainting and replacing over 1,000 backpack hooks at Marion Bergerson Elementary School. Yeah, okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
I would just like to make note, an indication of these boys' patriotism and service is on a day off, Veterans Day. They participated in the Laguna Nigal Veterans Day Ceremony. And Alex Troy was our bugler who played last post.
Thank you, boys. A proud day for all of us. Well, if anything, these events are sometimes a little bittersweet. We have another resolution. And this resolution is to commend Chief Brian Bryce, Orange County Fire Authority Division 5, January 2012 to November 2015. Brian, come on forward. Brian has been our division chief for all these many years. He's become, I consider, a good friend of mine since I'm on the fire authority and I see him on a pretty regular basis. He's an outstanding firefighter and he's attained one of the highest ranks in the Orange County Fire Authority, which is one of the largest fire authorities in the United States, in California. So we have a resolution commending you. And there's whereas, 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 whereas. You did a lot of stuff here. Well, let me read some of this. Whereas in his 26 years of service with OCFA, Chief Bryce worked as a firefighter, a paramedic, a captain, a battalion chief, and division chief. And he was on the hazardous materials response team, FEMA's urban search and rescue team, and he was the deputy fire marshal overseeing the pre-fire management and strategic services section. And he has a bachelor of science degree from Cal State University Long Beach and he has a master's in public administration. And he oversees the operations and administrations with three shifts of battalion four with 99 personnel and 200 members of FEMA's urban search and rescue program. And during his tenure, Chief Bryce provided terrorism training to all police and fire officers in Orange County, developed OCFA's five-year strategic plan and fire services proposals for potential partner cities, and managed the team involved in a long-term solution for urban search and rescue logistical warehouse needs. We are going to miss you, Chief Bryce. And Chief is going to be the fire chief in Oxnard, California, up on the coast. And we're going to miss you dearly. Thank you, Chief. Oh, yes, yes, look at this. Somebody take this certificate. Can you take this certificate? Hey, it's Brian Bryce. Turn on the other side now. Well, you can at least put it in your garage, but make sure you don't hit it. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a final presentation to be given by Youth Committee Vice Chair Logan Williams. And at this time, I would like Logan to come forward for the presentation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So as you know, in June, the Youth Committee turned 15 years old. We can officially be a freshman in high school. So looking back on our 14th year, we accomplished some very important things. One, we assisted in the 14th Annual Haunted Trails. Two, we assisted in the Military Support Committee with the toy collection at Walmart. And we assisted with the Teens of Turkeys, especially for our First Battalion, Fourth Marine Regiment. We updated the teen resource directory and we participated in the Job and College Fair, where we had over 180 people attend, nine employers, two volunteer organizations, and 16 colleges or institutes of higher learning. We want to beat this this year. So planned and current for this year, first, we had our great team-building exercise for our new committee members. It was bowling at saddleback lanes. We were all able to meet and we were able to socialize and we were able to get to know who we're going to work with, who we're going to volunteer with in the upcoming year. Next, we volunteered as guides for the 15th Annual Haunted Trails. I know our chairman, Justin Minigar, he was there working most days as a guide and he was able to guide all these people through and make it a great experience that we had people come up, give testimonials, and say, "It was better than last year and we want to come again." So again, starting this Monday, we had the guy pick up all the things that we donated for Teens for Turkeys. The Youth Committee collected over 20 bags of non-perishable items. This included soup, this included a giant bin of cake mix and stuffing and cornbread. That's going to be a great Thanksgiving for them. And now, we're going to participate in the holiday parade. That's December 12th. Again, we have already purchased our sweaters, we've gotten our reindeer antlers and our segways, and we're going to go down there and we're going to ride and represent our city. Coming up in January, we have the salsa dance workshop. We're all going to our schools and we're trying to get all of our friends, girlfriends, boyfriends, anybody we want, we want to come there and we're going to have a good time in salsa dancing. And then, again, we're going to beat that last year's job fair. We're going to have over 250 people attend that. This is April 16th. Mark it on your calendars. We're going to be there and we're going to make sure that these teens know exactly what's set up for them when they graduate high school. And then, we're going to volunteer at the Earth Day Celebration. Last year was a great one. And this year, we're going to make it better. And then rounding out our year, we have May, we have the Music and Arts Festival. Now, there was some debate over the food truck we were going to have there. I know. We like either In-N-Out or The Habit, but they chose The Habit. So have fun there, guys. And then we have the Battle of the Bands. Thank you. We look forward to making this a great year, working with the Youth Committee, working with the City Council, and all of our city government workers in volunteering. Thank you.
Thank you, Logan. That was a great presentation.
We need to be proud of the young people that are in our Youth Committee. They're doing a lot in our community. Thanks again, Logan. Okay, that concludes our presentations and bringing us to public communications. Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is required to submit a complete gold-colored request to speak form to the city clerk prior to being heard by the City Council. Each person will be given three minutes to speak. And I have one request here to speak from James, it looks like. You did not fill out a complete application here. It's all right. I accept that.
Just a couple of things I want to talk about. And I've been involved in this community since 1978, was the first home here. But I've been gone for a long time and I came back last year and a half. And some of the things that I've seen here are things that are disturbing to me as a community. Panhandling, begging for money, boarding houses that are unlicensed, unregulated. You have things that, twice now, I have a home in the Kite Hill area and I have another family home over in Laguna Crest. We had a drug rehab home that was trying to be developed or rented on strike. And through the activity of a lady on that street, the person that was trying to establish it decided it was best to go elsewhere. In the meantime, one has been there now for, it's not been confirmed, but it's pretty likely it is, over on the Clipper Way area. And the lady who lives next door, she just doesn't want to deal with it. She's moving. She doesn't care. She's not going to complain. She's just moving. Apparently, there are quite a few of these in your city and there's no licensing requirements in your city for business, for health or thing code enforcement or anything like that. I'd like you to consider licensing of that. You don't have to charge, like some cities charge on square footage of residences and you got to pay this or business profits or whatever. Just to know, for example, your fire chief here, if you have a fire at a boarding house in some residence, he has no idea how many people are in that house. Just for record, that's something that ought to be required. If they're running a boarding house in a residential neighborhood, your fire department shows up, they have no record of it being a boarding house. Those guys need to know how many people they can expect to be there. Drug rehab, same thing. How many people? As I understand, the rules are two to a bedroom. How many people, as I understand, the rules are two to a bedroom. Some of the houses, they can divide the big bonus room into two rooms, so now you have four people and they're not even bedrooms. The last straw, I guess, I'm going to address here with this, and there's many more that I've experienced in a year and a half here. But the other night, we were up on Heather Ridge, up by Costco, there's a young gal out there, looks like my granddaughter, maybe 16, maybe not. She's out there begging for money. We have no way to address that in this city because you are not giving your law enforcement people the tools to do it.
You have 30 seconds.
One of the suggestions is, everybody that begs for money on a public sidewalk in this city, don't charge them, just identify who they are and give your law enforcement people the tools to look at them and say, "All right, do you have your license to beg for money? If they don't, move on." If there happens to be a young gal out there and she's out there begging for money, "Hey, do you have a license?" No, we have agencies in law enforcement to be able to help them and direct them in the right direction. I think it's the responsibility of the City Council to start being ahead of the curve rather than behind the curve.
Thank you. I have no other request to speak, so I'm going to close Public Communications and then move on to the consent calendar. Have items one through nine, I believe. Does anybody want to do anything with the consent calendar? Okay.
Motion to move items one through nine.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
I'd like to comment on an item that we just passed. It's good.
Wait, just a second, I'm putting the clock back.
One of the items that we just passed was the procedure for interviewing the candidates for our Youth Committee. And as you saw this evening, the, one of the members of our Youth Committee, who's the vice chair this year, what excellent students that we have on that Youth Committee. And one of the things that we put in there was a minimum GPA of 2.25, and the reason for that is twofold. Number one, some students tend to think that everything is meant for the 4.0 student, and it's not. We want the students, the high school students in our city to know that this is for a broad range of students and a broad range of interest. By the same token, we want to make sure that the extra responsibilities of being on the Youth Committee do not put that struggling student over the edge, so we want to make sure that they are passing their classes. And usually, when students are at the lower end of the GPA, do, being involved with your community and with your city and civic engagement tends to boost them up a little bit. So I'm very happy that we, as a council, worked on this and look forward to our next round of applicants come, what is it, May? Yep, that's it.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Works Item Number One, and that is the Annual Traffic Collision Analysis. Public Works Director Abazadeh, may we have your staff report?
Mr. Mayor, council members, most traffic accidents are caused by human error. However, traffic engineers analyze accident data and review trends or patterns in order to make field improvements to help reduce the number of collisions. Each year, accident data from a prior year is analyzed and the findings are presented to the city's traffic commission and City Council. Staff relies on the data from the state of California, and given the budgetary constraint at the state level, the most recent dataset available to us is from calendar year 2012. This year, in this analysis, staff examined 18 intersections in town that had the highest number and rates of accidents. The accident rate is based on a benchmark to assess if an intersection exceeds the city's established baseline in prior years. For example, the baseline for signalized intersections is 1.12 and two stop has a benchmark of 1.38. The rate is determined by taking the number of accidents at a location, multiply it by 1 million, and dividing it by the total number of vehicles at an intersection and annualizing it. Not to get into high mathematics, but if you take a look at Attachment A, you will note that the highest collision location in town, in terms of number and rate this year for 2012, was Molten and Ranch in Niguel with 13 accidents. If you multiply 13 by 1 million and add divided by 35,000, which is the daily volume at the intersection, and further divided by 365, it yields 1.02, which is the annualized rate of accident at that location. The 18 intersections listed in Attachment A all fell below the city's established baseline rates. However, staff did investigate the top five intersections for additional analysis and determine that the accidents were mainly due to human error. The results of this analysis was reported to Traffic Commission in September of this year, and after discussion, commissioners asked staff to examine the accidents at Molten and Ranch on Niguel Road to detect any patterns. Staff reviewed the accident reports and listed the day of the week, time of day, and types of accident determined any patterns. None was found. We also looked at partial data that we have for 2013 and 2014 at the intersection, and the incomplete information indicates that the accident rates have dropped in the last two years. I would also like to draw attention to an article that was published in April of this year. This was based on a raw data that the article had received from the sheriff's office, and it lists number of locations in town with number of accidents. Obviously, this caused some concern by the residents. To contrast that, it's important to take a look at the data that we received from the Office of Traffic Safety. Attachment C in the back compares our city with 101 other cities of equal size and population, and you will notice that overall, city is doing better than average. If you look at the total fatal and injury accidents, city's 91 out of 102. And at the bottom of that first table, the composite picture is 79 out of 102, like I said, higher than the average when you look at other cities in the state. Finally, there were two recent collisions in town that I'd like to talk about that briefly. Even though the actual final reports won't be made available to us for another two or three months, there were two accidents that involved motorcycles and passenger vehicles. One was at Golden Lantern in Adlanto and the other one was Passeo de Cuenas and del Soro. The first intersection, Golden Lantern, Adlanto, is controlled by a stop sign at Adlanto, and the second accident at Cuenas and del Soro is controlled by a traffic signal. Like I said, we have incomplete information at this point and we're still waiting for complete accident reports to further investigate and evaluate the situation there, to take formal action. In reviewing the accident report this year, the Traffic Commission requested that the 2013 collision dataset be analyzed and presented to them in early 2016. As soon as the dataset is available and we also have the complete information on the recent two accidents, we will present our findings and recommendation to the council and City Council afterwards. That concludes the staff report. I'll be happy to respond, any questions you may have, and also what, any direction you may have for staff.
Are there any questions for, now sir? Any questions? I just wanted to make a comment on, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, no, I'll defer to you.
Okay. I have a question, and it's that stretch of Golden Lantern where Adlanto and Villa de Anza come out. Now, did you just say that we are working on an analysis of that?
As soon as we get the staff report, we will do an analysis and take the results, as I mentioned, to the commission and eventually the City Council, yes.
Okay, because I know that historically, that's been a very bad area, and even if not all the near accidents are reported, there's quite a few, and I believe in addition to driver error, there's the topography there that needs to be dealt with.
We'll be happy, we'll be happy to take a look at it and, over the next couple of months, and take the results to the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just want to reiterate on, I think it's in Attachment C where the rankings are shown for type of collision and the OTS ranking. We're 79 out of 102. That means we're, in terms of severity, we're the 79th down the list. I just want to make sure I understand how the list works. So we're 79, but the other, the other item which is interesting is we're number 11 out of 102 in DUI arrests. So we're up there pretty high as far as DUI arrests and fairly low in terms of collision.
Correct. It shows that there were 105 arrests made that year, and the chief of police and the sheriff's department should be congratulated for doing a great job out there.
Okay, very good. Any further comments? What, are we just file and receive? Okay, can I have a motion to file and receive?
Can I make a motion?
All in favor? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Okay, our last item is City Council Item Number One, and that is the selection of the mayor and mayor pro temp. And I would like to make a motion to nominate Lori Davies as mayor for the coming year and to serve as mayor effective December 1, 2015.
No, second that.
Okay, any other nominations for mayor? Okay, I'll close the nomination. Hey, I think you won by acclamation here. Let's, let's do it for the record, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? Oh my gosh.
Okay, don't give them second choice there. Thank you very much, I greatly appreciate the opportunity, and with that said, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Councilmember Jerry Slusiewicz as mayor pro temp.
I'll second that. Any other nominations? Okay, I hereby close the nominations. All those in favor of Jerry Slusiewicz as being mayor pro temp in the coming year? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any negatives? You don't, you don't want to say anything?
I said aye.
Okay, everything is, okay, now we're going on to other business and council reports, and I'm going to start out. First of all, I'm, one of my last prerogatives as mayor is being able to put something on an agenda with no other votes. And I'd like to put on the agenda the item of short-term rentals for December 15th. I'd like to have that on the agenda for the City Council, and City Council can then do what they want with that item, but I think it's an item that we need to get on our schedule. And so, having said that, I, I want to tell you a little about what I've done in my last month as the mayor. I chaired the Budget and Finance Committee of the Orange County Fire Authority where Division Chief Bryce, I think you were there. Yeah, okay, good for you. I had coffee with a cop, they had a little greet and meet down at the Corner Bakery, and I got to meet the chief and some of his deputies, and we had a cup of coffee and got to look at new police cruisers and nice motorcycles, and he didn't let me ride one, though. But it was, it was a great event, and they had a, they had a nice turnout. All the little kids come out and they were really awed by what was going on. I attended a strategic visioning workshop with the Orange County Watershed Management Committee, which is involved in a lot of watershed issues in the county, and it's, we're trying to do some strategic visioning for the next five to 10 years. And so there's a lot going on in terms of water, drought relief, that kind of thing. Had a very interesting evening at, down at the Ocean Institute with San Diego Gas and Electric, they had what they called an innovation event. It was promoting basically electric automobiles, and I got to ride in a Tesla. Wow, belonged to Gary Capida. And man, that sucker really accelerates. He's going to get in trouble. You guys watching him? Yeah, okay. I told him I'd give him the color of his car to you, so. Somebody's in front of his house right now. I did attend the Vets' Day program, and all my, all credit to Elaine for putting that together. It was an awesome experience. We had some World War II vets there that gave, and we heard some stories about World War II, and that was very, very interesting. And that's all I got, so I want to start with you.
Hey, I attended the Connecting Women to Power Conference at UCI. It was put on by Board of Equalization member Diane Harkey. There were many speakers, workshops, and resources for women business owners or those who want to go into business or even advance their own career. So there are a lot of resources out there, and I encourage you that if you are looking into going bis, into business or growing your business, that you contact Diane Harkey's office, because they have many resources there. Attended the Youth Committee meeting, as, as you can tell when the vice chair Logan Williams spoke, they have a lot going on and we're so proud of them. I also attended the Laguna Niguel Stake Open House, and it was very informative to learn about all their community services, and I enjoyed meeting the members. Last Tuesday was the Laguna Niguel Junior Civic Workshop, and the module for this workshop was the drought. And General Manager June Lopez of Molten Niguel Water District was the speaker, and she was so fun and engaging with the students, she kept them interested the whole time, and talked about water resources, where do we get our water, how do we, how do they prepare it so it can come to our homes, what is being done during the drought? And I think, it was such a fun and interesting presentation that I think in future years, we'll see some students coming, who have been there, come out and be interested in a water career. And also, Director Brian Plabowski also attended. As Mayor McCluskey said, we had the 5th Annual Veterans Day Ceremony last Wednesday. The Freedom Committee speakers were Major General William Mall and Captain Bob Meyer and the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts and the Brownies, and the Military Support Committee and the Laguna Niguel Boys Club all participated. It was really a coming together of our community for a great event that really honored our veterans. Every single veteran there was honored and received a handmade thank you card from our Brownies. I also attended the TCA meeting last week, and some of the interesting things that came out of that was that they're working with the rental car companies to develop a procedure, a procedure where the car renter can be billed for the toll rather than having a violation. And this has been worked out with most companies, because currently, the TCA has a $700,000 toll violations annually for rental cars. There's also $3.5 million in toll revenue that is lost for non-plated new cars, and when a new car is purchased, it has the potential of not having license plates for 90 days. So they're working with the state legislature on that. And I know many, many months ago, people were talking about that long wait time when you call the TCA. Now it's down to under five minutes, and they're very happy with that. And yesterday was the Military Support Committee meeting, and a huge thank you to all of our residents who participated in the holiday toy drive. Both the sailors, the USS McCluskey and the Stockdale, I mean, not the McCluskey, that retired, the Stockdale. And the Marines of the First Battalion, Fourth Marine Regiment will be marching in our holiday parade, so be sure to wave to them as they march down Crown Valley and thank them for their service. But again, they will be very delighted when they see those smiles on their children's faces, receiving their holiday presents. So thank you to Laguna Niguel for making that possible for the children. And thank you very much, Mayor McCluskey, for leading us this year.
Oh, well, thank you.
Appreciate it, working with you.
I just wanted to make a comment on the TCA. I got a violation notice on a car that I traded in a year and a half ago, on the Carquinez Bridge in San Francisco Bay Area. I, I think they have a problem identifying their cars. Mayor pro temp, a mayor pro temp.
Thank you. I attended a few of the committees that, we're talking about the Youth Committee and the Women in Parliament Committee, but something I'd like to touch base real quick, and I think it's important for the public, I spent the afternoon over at OCTA with Dave Simpson, who is the Director of Public Relations. And we're discussing Measure One and Two, and as you know, this is a tax that we pay and this money goes for our transportation. They're in the process right now of wanting to transfer some funds. What I wanted to let you know is, first of all, with them transferring funds, these funds will stay within Measure Two. They won't go anywhere else. What they do is they have a supplement of about 200, $219 million in Project T, and this project was for rail stations. If you go to Anaheim, you'll see the Arctic Station, and that's about the only project they have there. What they want to do is transfer some of the funds over to Project U and Project V. Both those projects, one would be with working, which would be benefit to our city, it's more on community transit, so if we wanted to have perhaps a small shuttle, we talked about getting a shuttle down the gateway, so that the whole idea is that you don't have to get in your car if you're living at the gateway, if you want to use the MetroLink. This would be, these would be funds that we could use for that project. And the other project would be for the bus transit. There's a whole different, a whole different feeling right now, what we're going through is we have the baby boomers either retired or retiring, so we have a much higher population using the bus transit. And what they want to do is they don't want to raise the price, and it's something they really talked about. So they'd like to take these funds, transfer them over there, so that way they can keep the rates as they are for the elders, the seniors, as well as hopefully bring the other funds over to the community transit. So if you're interested in this, there's going to be a public meeting. It's on December fourteenth at the OCTA building at nine o'clock AM. I highly recommend going over there and hearing more information. But all in all, I mean, I was really happy to see, just reassuring you that everything is staying within Measure Two. It's just moving funds where right now there's a need for them. And I'd like to also thank you for an incredible job. It's been an honor sitting next to you, and you should be very proud of the way you've represented this city as mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Minigar.
A couple of things. I also attended breakfast with a cop, which was very interesting, and I was very pleased to commend all the police officers in our beautiful city for doing a great job. As a man, I was invited by Board of Equalization member Diane Harkey, the former Assemblywoman, the former mayor of City of Dano Point, to attend the conference of Connecting Women to Power at UCI. It was extremely well-attended, and as I said, I was one of those few men that were out there. There were plenty of women. Then I also attended the ACCOC's reception for public leaders as servants in Costa Mesa, chatting with other mayors and council members with regard to their services, and also some police officers, some firefighters were in attendance, talking about their experience and how they've been serving the public. And then I was invited by the Self-Help Counties Coalition in Newport Beach to be serving on a panel with all the CEOs of twenty counties in California that they are called self-sufficient, and I'm very pleased and proud for Orange County to be one of those counties, one of the twenty counties that basically we generate our own money when it comes down to under Measure M or in Los Angeles County, under Measure R, and a bunch of other counties, basically by the voters, Hafeston sales tax, they accumulate that kind of money to spend it for infrastructure projects. We had a lot of people from Washington DC, Federal Highway Administration, USDOT, and it was extremely well-attended. And as I said, the core discussion was the financial aspect of the transportation arena in California with the shortfall that we have in the state budget when it comes down to expenditure in the transportation sector, which is fifty-six billion dollars so far under Governor Jerry Brown's program, that they don't know how they're going to get that kind of money. We cannot go to the US government, FHWO, USDOT, by asking the money, because everything is unknown in Congress, as you know, because of the way the system is established and Highway Trust Fund, and there are a lot of ambiguities out there, and nobody's sure how we are going to be able to finance all these projects. And again, I'm very pleased to say that we're number two in the state of California. Alameda County up in the Bay Area is number one by allocating two-point-four billion dollars with regard to infrastructure construction. And my friend Darrell Johnson, the CEO of OCTA, was mentioning that for Orange County, we're talking about one billion dollars this year, this upcoming year, 2016, that would be exclusively being spent on transportation, infrastructure improvement, and it's all because of the voters in Orange County had voted for M-two, which is the second generation of M-one for improvement of transportation, infrastructure. And we as a city, as a municipal corporation, along with thirty-three other cities in Orange County, we are getting the benefit out of that Hafeston sales tax, and as you well know, a lot of our projects in the city are being financed, funded by Measure M-two or previously Measure M. So the system is working, and I feel very sorry about thirty-eight other counties in the great state of California that they have not come to the sense of passing that kind of measure or that kind of taxation, if you will, based on sales tax, to take that money and to improve infrastructure, which creates economic vitality for everyone. So with that, I guess that's about it. That's all I have.
Councilmember Slusiewicz.
Thank you, Mayor. I must have been slacking the last couple of weeks compared to my fellow council members, and I guess I'm pro tem going forward, I better get a hitch. Again, I'll start with congratulating and thanking our mayor for the service of the last year. I know we're going to cover that a little bit in the next meeting, but he did a fine job leading the city, and it was a year of transition in many different aspects. And just want to thank you and appreciate your leadership. I did go to an ad hoc Parks and Rec Committee with Mayor Pro Tem, soon to be Mayor Davies. We're working on the entrance to the Crown Valley Park. It's not decided yet in terms of stone, and yeah, obviously, council will have to vote on it. But one of the things, I guess I'm going to spill the beans right here, right? Can I do that? I can, right? Going to put a electronic sign out there as one of the considerations. We think that that will help the communication for the city instead of having Parks and Rec go out there with little letters each time, and they couldn't change quick enough to the amount of vast information that we can get amongst all the city populace on this entrance to Crown Valley Park. So that's one of the considerations. So it will be quite a change for what we have, you know, but I think that that's one of the viable great changes that we're looking at. So I'll throw that out there. Did do coffee with a cop. Our police service is doing a great job. To the speaker earlier, James, and to our traffic report by our Public Works Director, Nancy Abazada, I think it's really important that within the realm of the law that you have the ability. We appreciate all you're doing, and we do encourage you to do, you know, all that you can in areas of keeping our city safe, keeping our traffic safe, keeping these homes that, you know, aren't necessarily the greatest ideas that we may or may not have any ability to control, controlled. And I know you and your team, it was great to get to talk to all your team members, and you've got a great team that you've selected, and we do appreciate all you've done. Sergeant Song right in the back as well, as well as our Public Safety Director. And then the last thing was the Veterans Day. I think Councilmember Janeway deserves a lot of credit. She did a great program, great speakers, great interest, and again, honoring our veterans. It was a really nice event. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I would just make a little quick comment. It's been a pleasure for me to be the mayor of this great city for the last year. I especially appreciate the comedy of everybody in our meetings. We have very little drama, and things go well, and I just really appreciate what the staff does. Just the work is just beautiful. I come in occasionally and sit down with the city manager or other staff members, try to get an update on things. Everybody is always, always way ahead of the curve in terms of their knowledge of what's going on in this city, and I'm just continually amazed at how well things are being run. So I want to thank you all for your support. You know, none of these things happen without that kind of support. I couldn't do it without you, and I will remember the good times I had up here on the dais. And with that, I would like to have our city attorney read us into closed session, I think.
Oh, you're not going to go around?
Oh, we're going to, oh, you want to do that, too? Got to give you guys a chance to say something? Okay, I'm sorry. I got so excited there, I didn't know what to do.
You were out the door.
Yeah, I was almost out the door. Chief, what do you got? Thanks a lot. Come on, Steve. I'm going to pass you up. Okay. Terry?
Nothing. I have nothing.
Nothing? Brian?
He just grabbed the microphone. There we go. I just wanted to say thank you to the council and all the staff here. It's been a pleasure to serve the city of Laguna Niguel, and while I'm moving on to Oxnard, if the city ever decides to have their own fire department, I'm not that far away. You can always call me. Thank you very much.
Okay. We'll miss you, Brian. Pauline? Jeff? Debbie?
Mayor, I just want to say thank you, too. It's been an honor serving with you, and you're just a wonderful mayor. Thank you for everything.
I couldn't do it without you.
Well, it's been my pleasure, and I also wanted to wish Brian the best of luck in your new city. Brian, we are going to miss you.
Allison?
Yes, ditto. Thank you for your leadership and support of Parks and Recreation. We appreciate it, and we're glad you're still going to be here, Brian. Very sad to see you go, but thank you for all your support over the years as well. Real quick, we have a lot going on in the next couple, coming up in the next couple of weeks. Holiday Madness will start on Friday, December fourth, with the Holiday Boutique and Social with live music at Sea Country Center. There's a five-dollar admission fee for that. Saturday, December fifth, is the annual Christmas tree lighting from five to seven PM here at City Hall. This is a free event with lots of fun activities for the whole family. Sunday, December sixth, is the Hanukkah Wonderland and menorah lighting celebration. That will start at three-thirty PM here at City Hall, also free. Monday, December seventh, make sure you submit your entries for the Holiday Lights Decorating Contest. It's always a lot of fun. We pick the winners on Tuesday, and by Friday, the city has access to a map to go and view all of the winning homes. That's free entry for that. Wednesday, December ninth, Santa will be at the Crown Valley Park pool, and it's free to go see him. And biggest event of the year, Saturday, December twelfth, the annual holiday parade, and it's going to kick off at ten AM at Niguel, I'm sorry, No Way of Vista and Crown Valley Parkway. That's all I have.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Dan?
Would just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy a wonderful weekend with friends and family.
Thank you. Nasser?
I'll second what Dan said. Thank you.
Okay, very good. With that, now we'll talk to Rod.
Good, ma'am, thank you.
You're good? Okay, this is your last chance to talk to me up here, like at this spot.
You're not going away.
Oh, okay. All right.
What's better, always a mayor.
So this time, I could, would I, I would like to have our city attorney read us into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor McCluskey. Mayor McCluskey and members of the council, we have two scheduled closed sessions tonight, both concerned conference with labor negotiators. The first concerns the negotiations with the Orange County Employees Association, and the second concerns negotiations relative to unrepresented employees that are listed on the agenda. We do not anticipate that there'll be any announcements made tonight, and we expect the council will be adjourning from closed session.
Thank you. With that, I want to recess the meeting.